To your body hate, rest well, sit upright in a quiet place with a good light coming. And please do it during break time. During the meeting, please mute or turn off microphone unless you are speaking. Turn on camera devices, so gesture for example, good, yes, no, clapping, or I cannot hear you. Stand up and look at your camera when delivering speech and call out name. If you're switching view between gallery and speaker is on the top right of your screen. If you want to go to chatroom is in the bottom right corner of your screen. Thank you. Now, we will welcome our president Toastmaster Melita. Please welcome.
Hello everyone, good evening from Bali and also I would say good morning, good afternoon, good evening everywhere you are. And especially our guests from Malaysia, right? I heard that your name, hold on, I hope I pronounce your name well. It's Mars, Mars Lisa, is that right?
Yeah.
Close.
Mars Lisa.
Okay.
Very close.
Thank you so much for coming to our meeting and also Kadija Amir, thank you so much for coming and all my fellow friends. It's really nice to see you again, Dani Wira, Miranda, Ajie, John, Puspita, Amel, DeDe, Andre, um, wow, Sani Funi. My sister is from KLS Wells and Natalie, Anda and Amelia from Surabaya. Thank you so much for coming and supporting our meeting. And this is our first meeting on new down, new term. As you all know, Toastmasters is a worldwide organizations that has more collapse than Starbucks. So Pipit from Surabaya told me that and I copied several times. What you will get in Toastmasters, not only a speaking skills, leadership skills, but also friendship. And for me, Toastmasters is just like a family here, especially here in Bali. You will more not you, I get feel like this is my third family in Bali. Anyway, if you were confused what we're gonna do after this, our lovely Tom will explain that. But mostly enjoy this meeting and I hope that you will get something useful for your daily life. Again, welcome to our meeting and I give it, I give the control to our lovely Tom, Wira.
Thank you, Toastmaster Melita. Well, hello Toastmaster, good evening, good morning, good afternoon, wherever you are at the moment. So I'm so glad tonight I can be here with you together in this special moment, yeah? The regular meeting of Medical Bali Toastmasters. So as what mentioned earlier by our president that today is our first meeting in this term. Okay, so I'm Wira, I will be your Toastmaster of the meeting. Okay, so for the meeting tonight, we have a special theme and the theme is when words, when words fall short. So this theme is inspired by a special day celebrated in the world, which is World Emoji Day. I just knew this when I started, wow, this is really wonderful and this is really fit to our nowadays situation where we communicate not only face-to-face in person, but we communicate a lot with our, with texting. And when we communicate, of course, we want to express our emotion. It's kind of hard to express our emotion with just words. So emoji really help us to express our emotions. So tonight, if you have really funny virtual background, please do show it to us. And if you want to give reaction to all speakers, please give the reaction with the emoji to encourage all of the speakers tonight. So tonight, I'm not going to be alone. Of course, we have the GE team is going to introduce one by one of the theme over there. We have our lovely general evaluator, our DTM, Miranda Rumi, please introduce your theme in evaluator. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Wira. I'm the general evaluation evaluator and that means I will be evaluating the whole meeting and shining lights on what is done well and then also what can still be improved. So I'm not alone in my team. I will be this helped by the grammarian, who is like a language evaluator. I would like to call upon Natalie to explain about the role.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your introduction. Hello everyone. If you notice what I did, that is, I like I'm demonstrating our word of the day, grinning, grin. Grin is smile broadly, especially in an unrestrained manner and with the mouth open. For me, I have big mouth and big teeth, so it's a very easy work. And you can also express your emotion through grinning, like expressing with a broad smile. But in a, like a more negative take, it could be a grimage or appear to grimage grotesque, yeah? Grotesquely in a way that reveals the teeth. So one example for sentence is Dennis appeared grinning cheerfully, or in the sense, I can see emoji on Wira's background grinning. Exactly, grinning coolly with the sunglasses. Another thing that I'm gonna do as a grammarian is not only to introduce word of the day, but also to evaluate the meeting based on language. So certain phrases or sentences that we all can learn and we can apply together for our next conversation or for our next presentation. Also certain habits or maybe grammar, that grammar mistakes that we didn't realize that we all can learn from. So I will be back at the end of the session to deliver my report. Back to you, Madam GE.
Thank you for a very clear and detailed explanation. Now we know that we need to grin a lot and not just saying it. Alright, so next in my team would be the counter and I would like to call upon John Manurung. Please explain your role, John. Then don't forget to grin.
Yeah, thank you, DTM Miranda. Am I audible?
Yep. Loud and clear.
Okay, hello fellow Toastmaster and guests. So my role today is counter. The purpose of the counter is to note words and sounds that are used as a crutch or pause filler by anyone who speaks. During the meeting, I will listen for overused words, including and, well, but, so, and, you know. I will, I will also listen for filler sounds, including ah, um, and er. I will also note when a speaker repeats a word or phrase such as I, I, or this means, this means. At the end of the meeting, I will report the number of times that each speaker use this expression. So if I can add some tips to, to avoid your ah in while you're speaking, you can pause or you can keep silent for a while and thinking before you speak. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's mine our ums and uhs. Right, next, I would like to call upon our timer, Yulianni, to explain your role.
Thank you, DTM Miranda. Hello everyone, my name is Yulianni. My role tonight is timer. As a timer, I will monitor each of the speaker. I also will record the time and will give the alert to the speaker so they will mind about their allotted time. Because today the word of the day is green, so here's the reminder, I also put the emoticon. So green means that this is the minimum, you reach the minimum allotted time when you speak. And then yellow is the midpoint. And then when you reach the maximum, you will see this emoticon. So for all speaker, please do pin me so you will be aware of the time that you have.
Thank you, Yulianni.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, now we'll be grinning the whole evening. Next, I would like to call upon our ballot counter, Arini. Where is Arini? Yes, Arini, would you mind showing your video? Yes, Arini. Please share with us what does ballot counter do?
Am I audible?
Yes, yes. Loud and clear. Proceed.
So as the ballot counter, I will count the speaker who is the winner at the end of the meeting after this. So I hope the speaker enjoy your speech and do your best.
Thank you. Well done. Alright, so this are the all the evaluator team and of course they are the.
TTE, Miranda.
Sorry?
TTE.
Yes. Sorry, we don't have a TTE here.
Ah.
Amelia, do you?
Who? Oh, you are, yes, okay, Amelia, you're not in the agenda, sorry about that. Yes, we actually have a little bonus that, yeah, we don't have very many guests today, but we will have the evaluation for the table topic speaker so we can all learn and improve hopefully. So please explain your role, Amelia.
Good evening, everyone. I will be the table topic evaluator. So in the second session, there will be a table topic session and you can learn about impromptu speech and I will give a suggestion how you, how you could improve your impromptu speech. Okay, I think that's all. Back to GE.
Thank you. So now we really complete and we can proceed. So I will, we will all give our evaluations at the end of the meeting. And with that, I would like to return the stage or the virtual stage to our Toastmaster of the meeting, beautiful Wira.
Proceed, Wira. Thank you very much, our DTM Miranda. I'm so sorry before, I think we missed one of our important role here, TTE. I put her name on the bottom, so sorry for that, but we have completed and keep grinning, alright? So for tonight, we're going to have three sessions as usual and in our first session, it's going to be a prepared speech session. There are three speakers is going to deliver their speeches tonight and I'm sure you can't wait to hear their speech, right? And on the second session, we're going to have table topic session in which you can participate, have fun here and try to practice your impromptu speech. We have the leader letter, our Toastmaster of the meeting, Andre Maori. And then the last session is going to be the evaluation session where all of us going to learn and find out what are the things that we can improve in the next meeting. Okay, we're going to start with our first session, which is prepared speech session. So as I mentioned earlier, we have three speakers tonight. So I would like to invite our first speaker. She's Melita Oktanawati and she's going to be evaluated by her evaluator, Anda Wijaya. So I would like to invite Anda Wijaya to introduce Melita and share the detail of her project. Anda Wijaya, the screen is yours. Is Anda Wijaya with us?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Thank you. Okay. Melita Oktanawati, she is a president of Toastmaster Club, yeah, Medical Bali Toastmaster. She will speech the title, sorry, the project is for researching and presenting, presenting. And please welcome to Melita, the stage is yours.
Before I start, okay, I'm gonna ask you a few questions. Who's here is single at the moment? Raise your hand, my lovely friends. Alright, I see Amel, okay, hi Amelia, Amelia from Lombok. And I see Miranda as well. Well, Ajie, I know for sure. Okay, Mars Lisa, oh my god, you're so beautiful and you're so single. Alright, okay, and who else? And I'm not sure you are not because I can see your daughter behind you, right? Okay, so for all single ladies and gentlemen here, are you feel happy? Type yes if you feel happy or type no if you are not happy with your single life. Yes, from Dani, single happy from Sani. Alright, okay, Puspita, yes, Mars Lisa, yes, 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 I'm having fun all the time, Andre Maori. Alright, okay, enough for the single ladies and gentlemen. Now, for you who are not single anymore, either you are not single by mistake or by choice, raise your hand or other, I don't want you to raise your hand, just answer my questions. Do you miss being single? I'm doubled with happy, Yulianni said like that. Alright, so for those who are not single, do you miss being single? I hope you say yes. Yes, we say yes. Oh my goodness. Alright, any, anyone else? Come on, I need one more answer. Oh wait, did Natalie say yes before that? That? Alright, okay, cool. Okay, right. Now, thank you so much for your response. And I believe now you know what I'm gonna talk, right? As you can see, I did a bit research. I put the research links on the chat box that you can read later on after this meeting. There are several things that makes you still be single. I'm still single. And when I read this link or I did this research, there are some things that really hit me. Alright, this is so me. And I'm gonna tell you three things. I might, I, I believe there are a lot of things, but I only put three things. First, past experience. This is the hard things and the deep things that I would like to talk to you. Past experience also lead you to your new, in your current situations right now. For example, most people have been hurt in interpersonal relationships. And people say, it's just about the time. It is not, I'm telling you, it is not about the time. So we always building up, sharing decrease of bitterness and become defensive. And that's happened to me, my past relationship because I had a, a not healthy relationship. So that's why I'm, keeps being single and happy at the moment. And this experience, of course, I hope this experience, your past experience will not determine you or whoever you are right now is not determined by your past experience. So if you're still single right now, do not blame your past experience. Okay, let's move to another second point. Pickiness. It's not pickle, yeah? It's pickiness. I admit, sometimes I, yeah, I picky a little bit, I thought that, oh, he's not into me. I'm not into her and else. Pickiness is also one of the barriers to have a relationships. Or maybe you set your bar too high. Either you like or not, it is what it is. Sometimes you see people and you saw like, I graduated from Stanford University and he just graduated from a high school students. And then you look and then you said that, oh, I do not want to be with him because we do not have the same educations. Again, that's pickiness. Now, the third things. This one, isolation, right? So for this point, I blame COVID for the isolations. In that situations, what else we can do? Let's just go for work if you are still work from the office and then just going back home and then you open your laptop and then you lodge into your Zoom account and then you are here with us. It's also part of the self-isolations, but thanks to Zoom and also thanks that we are still having a good internet that we can meet people virtually. Now, can you imagine if all single ladies and men in this world just meet virtually? Without touch. Well, sometimes in a relationship, we need to touch and also we need to talk deeply face-to-face to build the relationships. Can you imagine that? That this isolation is also become a big barrier for us or for all of you to keep being single. It's such a pity, but we can do nothing. At least, there are still a Tinder and also the other apps that I would not suggest you to do that for some reasons. Okay, and it's also part of the isolations is your comfort zone. For introvert like me, this isolation is not the big thing. If I can see you all grinning right now, grinning right now, it probably you are a introvert. Or, okay, I see not giving a big smile, so probably I assume that you were an introvert, not? Or you just want, or you just tired meeting people. And these things and also put you in a, I'm gonna call like a self-defense. Oh, the right one will find me when it's time or I'm not single, I'm limited edition. Okay, so all these three points, your past experience, pickiness, isolation are three points, three points that can keep us being single. However, we couldn't do that for a long time, right? We need to move on. Who wants to be single every day, every time or forever? I do not want to be single. The reasons, I still being single right now because I want to find myself. I learned how to dig more about me. I learned to forgive myself. How can I forgive other people if I not forgive myself? And also, the most important thing is, I keep growing and I need space for me to keep growing. Ladies and gentlemen, what, no matter what your status right now, if you're single or not single, the most important thing is just find your happiness. Remember, you are creating your own happiness. If you have a partner, but you are not happy at all, can you imagine what will you do with your partner? You probably just saying like, ah, okay, fine, I don't like you because I'm not happy. Overall, single or not single, it is just a status. Let's keep growing to find love for ourselves because self-love is the most important thing. Back to you, Tom.
Wow, good applause to Toastmaster Melita. Show a word grinning smile. Okay, that's really interesting. I was the one who said yes, who wants to be single. I am not single anymore, but there is a time where I want to be single for some moments and can have my quality time. So just enjoy your time, even if you're being single at the moment, that's correct. It's the right time to find yourself deep, find your happiness inside you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our second speaker. Our second speaker will be Toastmaster DeDe Mahotama and he's going to be evaluated by his evaluator, which is Toastmaster Sani Chairani. Okay, Sani Chairani, can you please introduce DeDe Mahotama and share this detail project? Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, good morning, fellow Toastmasters. Our speakers, he is considered a new member. I think he just joined Toastma, uh, Magical Bali around one year. And now he's currently is doing project two in level two. Is defining his communication style. His speech will be five to seven minutes. And the purpose of the speech is to find out his style, his communication style and to identify that and also to share the impact of his communication style. So ladies, welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, Toastmaster DeDe Mahotama. How is he?
Am I audible?
Yes, you are audible and you are visible.
Okay. Hello, hello, bonjour, gooden tag, buenos dias, ciao. Ni hao, konnichiwa, konnichiwa, privet. That's how I say hello to you in eight languages such as Indonesian, English, French, German, Italian, Chinese Mandarin, Japanese and Russian. Nine languages, sounds awesome, right? I, so I ask you, my fellow Toastmasters, how many language can you speak? Is it two, three, four, or maybe 20 languages? Please type, type the numbers in the chat box, quick, come on, chat, type it, type it. So okay, let's see what we got. Four, oh, seven, Miranda's got seven, Natalie's three, Sani four, three, three, wow. Brilliant guys, four, and then we got four. Okay, cool. Okay, that's enough for the, for typing in the chat box. Thank you very much. So based on the response, I can, I can call almost all of you as polyglot. For those who don't know, what is a polyglot? Polyglot is a term used for people who can speak multiple languages. When someone becomes a polyglot, he or she must have prepared an agenda, right? But what is agenda actually mean? Generally, agenda means we're attempting to arrange what will be our next project or activities to conduct. However, I believe the meaning of agenda is like something that I have to apply in my daily life in order to achieve the most important goal, to be a success, successful person. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmasters and friend, I'm excited to share with you how communicating analytically allowed me to help create and establish the agendas within the Polyglot Club. And also believe that in order to be a successful person, I can start by making good use of my communication style. So from, from my interest of joining the Polyglot Club, it all started when I found an interview of an Indonesian woman who happens to be a polyglot in YouTube. Her ability to speak thirty, thirty languages fluently was astonishing. Yes, you heard that, right? Thirty languages. I told myself, wow, I admire her at determination. She was so aspiring. What can I do to be as fluent as her? And then I thought, oh, I know, let's join the Polyglot Club. I immediately, immediately got in touch with the chief of the Polyglot Club Denpasar branch named Evelyn so I can participate in its activities. I eventually got that chance on April twenty nineteen when I joined their multi-language meeting at Warung Abnormal. It was one of the most delightful experience in my life. And I also analyzed that this club can be the key to my success. Therefore, I must communicate with Evelyn in order to be appointed as one of the internal member in the club. I said to her, ma'am, I'm highly interested in what you do at this club and I want to be part of it. So is there a chance for me to be the internal club, internal member in this club? Impressed with my enthusiasm, she eventually accepted me as a member of the Polyglot Club. Yay, thank you very much for accepting me, ma'am. I won't let, I won't let you down. I promise you, I won't let you down. Hence, my journey as an internal member began. It's necessary to hold a meeting with my fellow internal member to discuss about our agendas after holding a meeting with the participants. I remember my first year of being an internal member, I had to communicate with other member to discuss about a better venue for our next meeting. The venue must be affordable and cozy. So I told them that we should do our next gathering at this place called Seventy Split Kitchen located in Sesetan, Denpasar. I tried to persuade them by saying, oh, hey, guys, here's the photo of Seventy Split Kitchen. This place is exactly what we're looking for. So I see no reason not to choose this place for our next meeting. Thankfully, they all agree and it became our place of choice in years to come. Time flies by and the COVID nineteen pandemic posed challenges to for our club. For starter, our meeting is now online and we noticed that less and less people interested to join the meeting. Everyone was struggling to think about what should we do to promote our club and how to encourage more, more and more people to come. I analyzed the main problem and I noticed that our club is just lack cooperation with other community that, that, that will make our club more well-known. So in order to tackle these problems, I told the team that, guys, I think, oh, sorry, I think we should build a cooperation with other communities here in Denpasar. And I know a community, community that willing to cooperate with us and it's called Digital Innovation Lounge Community, simply known as DILO for short. I further explained to my team that DILO is able to prove, uh, to provide many facilities like free Zoom link, free mentor and publication into their social media account. Sounds too good to be true, yes. But they have a good reputation of facilitating so many communities throughout Bali. What do you guys think? I asked the team. After further discussion, the chief and other members were eventually welcoming this idea. Now it's up to us to put this collaboration into our next agenda. I hope that my club could achieve the publication it needs. And after that, perhaps some of you here are interested in joining the Polyglot Club. So I'm looking forward to your participation, guys. Please feel free to contact me. From that experience, I've learned that all of us should develop their way to communicate with others because a good communication can, can be the most important key to your success. Therefore, I did, I determined that analytical, analytical is my communication style. So, terima kasih, thank you. Merci, danke, gracias, grazie, xiexie, konnichiwa, spasiba. Back to you, Tom.
All right. Wow, that's interesting. I think I'm interested to join that Polyglot even though I can only speak four languages. What are they? Balinese, Japanese, Indonesian, English? Okay, am sabida, one more. All right. Okay, we're going to move to our last speaker and our last speaker will be Toastmaster Batoro Ajit and he's going to be evaluated by his evaluator, um, Bunyi from Azam. And I would like to invite.
Thank you, Ira.
Yeah, Bunyi to introduce Ajit and also explain his detail project, please.
Thank you, Ira. Okay, I just saw my internet connection is not stable. So to, tonight, it is a great honor for me to be evaluating a dear friend whom I met a year and a half ago, whom I have actually never met physically. I've never touched before, I've never smelled before. But this guy has never felt to impress me with her level, with his level of truthfulness and honesty. Just like when he sent me his speech title today, definitely caught me on a big grid. Today Ajit is going to do her, his level five project two, leading in volunteer organization. The purpose of his speech is to apply and share his experience leading in a volunteer organization. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me to welcome Batoro Ajit. I don't like leading. I don't like leading, Batoro Ajit.
Thank you, Bunyi. Uh, host, can you allow me to record on my computer, please? Thank you. When I graduated from high school, I took a test and that test says that in leadership, I'm more suitable for a vice position, not a leader. The ego inside me rabbled. No, I don't believe this. I'm capable of being a leader. Well, I was young and had such a big ambition. And fast forward to December twenty twenty, I was appointed to be the Magical Bali Toastmasters Club President. See, I'm capable of being a leader. Well, my ego celebrated way too early. Little did I realize that it was not even started yet. Leading is hard. A six months journey of leadership indeed is not easy, was not easy. And I faced my ups and downs. And you know what? The experience was actually telling me that the test was right. I bet now it would say, see, I told you. It was tough to be a leader. I need to be initiative. I need to be firm. I need to be just, encouraging, determined, and so on. It's too much responsibility. And I felt like I'm carrying such a heavy weight. And in, in addition to that, I heard some comments like, Ajit, you're the president, you should be like this. Ajit, as you're the president, you have to be like this. Ajit, I think you need to be like this and blah, 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 blah. However, I understand that it is what it takes to be a leader. The most difficult part, however, is to encourage the team. As a leader, I cannot work alone. However, I also understand that I cannot force anyone to work, especially when they're having something going on. Well, life happens. Especially, you know, I cannot force anyone, especially without this, right? But on the other side, I was thinking about the goals, the initiatives that I had and I can't do all of them alone. I had dilemmas. How can I encourage someone if I myself am discouraged? How can I be accountable for the goals, the initiatives and the words I said the day I was inaugurated? And this all leads to a statement I say to myself that I don't like leading. However, everything happens for a reason, does it not? In my moments of reflection, I am reminded of a verse in Quran that says, but perhaps you hate a thing and it is good for you. And perhaps you love a thing and it is bad for you. I found out that being a leader is something that I don't really enjoy that much. But perhaps it is good for me. So I tried to see the bright side. Having the experience taught me a lot about myself. Through the hardships and the feedbacks, I figured out the areas I need to work on. Through accomplishments and appreciation, I learned my strength. Indeed, it is not a pleasure experience. But in the end of the day, I can put a grin on my face for I have gone ahead. Had I never been a leader, I would never learn further about myself. Had I never been a leader, I would have never grown. So fellow Toastmasters, based on this experience, there's a takeaway that I get that I want to share with all of you. And that is venture out for the sake of your soul. If we weren't meant to stay in one place, we'd have roots instead of feet. Back to Tom.
Okay, thank you. Give applause to our. Wow, Ajit, thank you very much. I feel, what is that? Uh, you are, we, we've been working together and I can feel that you have all of them. You have the pocket of leadership already. You show your responsibility and I can feel it. Initiative, thank you very much. I'm so glad that I've been the chance together to work with you in a team. Thank you for sharing. It was such inspiring speech. All right, so that's the end of our first session. We have heard the three speakers deliver their speeches and later there will be a session, we're going to choose the best speaker. And now we're going to move to the second session in which it's the table topic session and we encourage to all of you to try and practice your impromptu speech. And for this session, it will be led by Toastmaster Andre Maure. He's a language teacher who loves to encourage us to keep learning about language, right? Okay, Toastmaster Andre Maure, please lead the session.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Ira for that wonderful introduction about the table topics master of tonight's meeting. And before we begin this session, I'd like to remind you that the word of the day is green. As has been mentioned by the Toastmaster of the meeting and the grammarian earlier, this is the magic word that you must use as often as possible in this meeting. Table topics session is my most favorite session of Toastmasters meeting and I hope everyone here tonight have the same feeling. If you are, please say yes out loud. Unmute and say yes, everyone.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, cool. Yeah, so the purpose of table topics session is to teach us to speak spontaneously, to think on our feet. Oftentimes, we meet people in a gathering, in a meeting and we're asked a question. And in that situations, we gotta be ready to answer very quickly. And tonight, I would like to invite all the guests and fellow Toastmasters to participate in this wonderful session. For the first participant, Toastmaster Ricardo. Are you ready? Yeah. Okay, Toastmaster Ricardo. Yeah, I have chosen some questions and topics or quotes in relation to all the prepared speeches about love or being single, about, uh, learning languages, foreign languages or being a polyglot and also about leadership. So the first one is for you and it's related to the first topic. Toastmaster Ricardo, self-love is the best love. You can speak one to two minutes. Please pin the timer. About self-love is the best love. Unfortunately, we can't hear you, then Ricardo. Can everybody hear?
No.
Yeah, timer, please wait. We're still checking, yeah. Probably the Bluetooth is not connected yet. Yeah, would you please check in? Probably you can use the setting here for using microphone, your Bluetooth. Unfortunately, then Ricardo, we still can't hear you. I'll get back to you later.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, awesome, yeah, cool, yeah. So you got one to two minutes.
Yeah, self-love is everybody's, uh, something that you need to embrace. You have family, yes, you have friends, you have everybody. But there's one time in life that you are the one who knows what is the best and who knows about what is inside yourself. Does. There's some moment in my life that I, uh, embrace that self-love is uh, something that you have to dig deeper and then asking yourself that, um, you deserve to, to be loved, you deserve to, to be understandable, you deserve to be understood. During this time in our, uh, pandemic, it's, everybody's are reflecting and, uh, embracing of the loneliness sometimes. So it's sometimes it's hard to, to cope with this, but, um, it is important for us to stay, uh, sane, to stay, um, uh, true to yourself because you need to be self-love. I think that's all from me. Thank you, Toastmaster. Back to you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Tm Ricardo. It's always important to stay sane, especially in this situation, and love yourself, like Justin Bieber say. Okay, cool. Now, I'd like to invite one of our guests tonight. Mars Lisha, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Uh, it's Mars Lisha, but it's okay, you can call her Mars Lisha, actually.
Awesome, awesome, Mars Lisha, yeah. I noticed when Melita asked you, uh, when asked that question, uh, raise your hand if you're single and you raise your hand.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm single too. This is a code.
Do we noted, do we noted?
Okay, okay, yeah. So my, my question for you, Mars Lisha. What's the most exciting thing about being single? It's in the, yeah, the question is in the chat.
Well, what's the most exciting about, okay. Well, to me, what's most exciting thing about being single is being able to meet other people. Um, I find that whenever I'm in a relationship, there's always that sense of restriction or a way of basically bordering yourself out of talking to the opposite gender, uh, just to make sure that you don't, uh, make your partner feel jealous or make them feel as if, you know, you're cheating on them, so it's really nice to meet other people, to meet new people. That's one of the main things that I really love about being single. I also love that I have more time for myself, uh, for my family, uh, and for my job because most of the time when I find myself, work, I, I'm a workaholic, I would say. I tend to work long hours and not many people understand that, and none of my past relationships understood that about me. So being single really allows me to grow into my own person. And it really is true when they say that self-love is the best kind of love because you have to love yourself before you can love someone else. So that's how I feel about it.
Awesome, awesome, yeah. Thank you very much, Mars Lisha.
Thank you.
Yeah, so self-love or being single allows you to grow, exactly like what Melita. It's just a status, not a destiny.
It is not a, it's just a state, it's not a destiny.
Awesome, awesome, yeah. Now let's move on to the next speaker. I would like to invite one of the guests here, uh, Kadija.
Yes.
Would it be okay? Would it be okay? Awesome, awesome, yeah. Our second prepared speech speaker earlier talked about polyglot or speaking, uh, many languages. Yeah, uh, now I've got a very interesting quote by Frank Smith. I've just typed in the chat box. One language sets you in a corridor for life. Two languages open every door along the way. So you've got one to two minutes, Kadija, to speak about this quote. One language sets you in a corridor for life, two languages open every door along the way.
Alright, thank you, Andre. So let me repeat the quote. It says, "One language sets you in a corridor for life, two languages open every door along the way." I would say, uh, mastering a lot of language really helps you engage with people a lot more. Um, for my personal story, I, uh, I basically grew up in KL, but then I moved to Sarawak. So one thing you should know is that Sarawakians, we kind of speak a little differently from the KL people. So when I moved to Sarawak, since I actually know the language, it really helps me, uh, engage with people a lot more. It was easier for me to mingle. And it was just smooth sailing, you see? So I feel like mastering, not mastering, but, uh, knowing target, uh, a lot of languages could help you. Even though a little bit, it's a good conversation starter. So for me, what you have to do is just basically try to get to know people and, um, kind of like learn, try to learn other people's language here and there. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Kadija. You remind me of my time when visiting, uh, Malaysia. So right after I arrived and speaking to Malaysian, my English is changed a little bit like Malay English.
I can speak Indonesian still a little bit, you know?
Oh, I'm an Indonesian teacher and I'd be happy to teach you Indonesian.
Oh, that would be great. I'm, I'm trying to find Indonesian friends, you know?
Cool, cool. Come again, come again to our next meeting.
Will do, will do.
Cool, cool. Thank you very much, yeah. Um, I know we're going a bit, yeah, like, uh, overtime because, uh, Table Topics Session scheduled until 8:00 PM. Would it be okay to have another timer? Or Tom, would it be okay to have another?
I think one more, one more speaker, Andre.
Awesome, thank you very much, yeah. And we've got another guest here, Amelia Fabriani. Hi, Amelia, please show your attraction. Okay, alright, alright, yeah. Uh, Toastmaster Amelia, yeah, this is still something, um, related to, as I promised earlier.
To singleness?
Yeah, okay, would, would you still like that question, that topic?
I think you like that topic.
Okay, okay, yeah. Uh, and I could see that you like it too. Alright, yeah, so instead of giving you topics about languages and leadership, let me give you that topic about relationship. And there's a saying, "People throw themselves into relationships only because they are afraid to stay single." Amelia, this is for you. You've got one to two minutes. People throw themselves into relationships only because they're afraid to stay single. Off you go.
Yay. No, I, I, I think this is Miranda's topic, you know, relationship. Yeah, 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 she's just in love about that. And I think she has a project to, like, matchmaking everyone in the Toastmasters. Okay, okay. Relationship has been a topic that quite sensitive for us singles. And if I reflect on my own experience and my own thinking these days, uh, I found myself actually afraid to have relationship. Not afraid to be single, but afraid to have relationship. So it's quite the opposite of your quotes. So until one time, I think, why do I feel this way? Because nowadays, we are listen to a lot of fail, of failed relationship, like you're married for years and then end up, uh, divorce and so on. It's kind of make us feel that, is it, is there any relationship that really, uh, you know, like lasting forever? Basically, whatever your, your fear is, whether you're fear to have a relationship or you have a fear to stay singles, we, fear is not a good start to have relationship. So basically there. So the first thing is you have to be content with yourself. And you know that whether you're single or whether you're taken, you are worth it, you are precious. Having a partner, it's a blessing. Being a single is a blessing too. When you realize and you accept that, when you can love yourself and you're not afraid anymore, not afraid of being single and not afraid of having relationship, then you are ready. Ready to be single, ready to have relationship. So that's the most important thing, the, the, the thing that came to my mind these days. The need, the thing that I need to work on myself. So I need to learn not to let any fear define myself, define my starting point, and not let fear also paralyze me for not having a relationship. Back to you, Dpm.
Awesome, thank you very much, Toastmaster Amelia. Wonderful. I saw lots of smiles, laughter, and greens during this Table Topics Sessions, yeah. Thank you for teaching us singles, single ladies and single men here to not fear of being singles or facing the future. Because no matter what our status is, we are always blessed because it is a blessing. That's all the Table Topics Sessions, everyone. Now let's give the control back to our Toastmaster of the meeting, Tm Wira.
Oh, wow, wow, thank you very much, Toastmaster Andre. It was really wonderful, entertaining, and inspiring. So we have four speakers. Toastmaster Ricardo, thank you very much, Mars Liza, uh, Kadija, and Toastmaster Amelia Fabriani. Thank you for sharing your story. It seems like our topic changed into self-love, single but happy, but we all grating about it, right? Okay, so we're going to have a break for a few minutes. I think just three minutes is enough, right? Because, so sorry, we passed the agenda time, actually. Uh, I'm going to invite our SAA to lead us for the picture session before we have our break. And also, I would like to ask Amelia, Puspita, can you help to lead, um?
Right, uh, please open your camera, turn on your camera, please. Ajit, Ajit, where are you? Alright, I will take the picture. Smile, one, two, three. Okay, wait, wait. And once again, please grin.
So your grin if you're single.
So your, yeah, yeah. One, two, three. Done.
By the way, why, why am I like that?
Because your, your status is not clear, whether you're single or not.
I'm like a ghost, you know?
So we're going to go back at, uh, eight oh point one. Okay, have your break, please.